Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone here today and our viewing audience to the December 14, 2017, meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a pager or cellphone, please turn it off now. Even in silent mode, it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Kathleen Hart. I'm chairman of this committee and the members present today to my far left are Christine Woodard. On my immediate left is Jim Reistruffer, our vice chair. To my immediate right is Carrie Strahan. And to my far right is Judith Lee. Staff present today is Scott Copes and Mallory Hoyt from Legal. I think that's it. The zoning board of adjustment is a five-member judicatory board established by law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. We normally meet twice each month to hear appeals involving hardships from application of current zoning laws. We may also grant variances and rule on a variety of discretionary permits. We'll move on to our first item on the agenda of the minutes from the November 16, 2017 meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made? Absent that, I would take a motion to approve the minutes. Oh. There you are.
Motion to approve.
And a second, please.
A second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. We'll move on to item A on our new business. We have no old business on today's agenda. Item A is request HV-17-13 of Will Brook at 820 Bridge Avenue for a hardship variance to construct a 24-foot by 30-foot by 20-foot tall detached garage/ carriage house. The proposed carriage house will exceed height restrictions by six feet. Property is zoned R4 moderate-density dwelling district. Section 17.42.080A.3 of the zoning ordinance limits a detached garage to 15 feet in height. Scott, if you would please present the city's report.
Scott Copes, Community Planning. So as you've read, this carriage house, it meets the setback requirements and area requirements. However, it's going to be taller than what's allowed. It's going to be behind these bushes here, behind the front wall of the house. This is just a view from a little bit further to the north. This is the neighbor's driveway here, and then again, the carriage house would be in this area over here. This is the site plan map. So the red area is where the carriage house would go, and it would be accessed from the existing driveway. And just in case you're curious about this property line here, there is a restrictive covenant agreement not to sever on file, so they are allowed to build the structure on that adjacent lot. We had one comment via phone call and email, and I forwarded that to you. It was a simple comment in favor of the request. When staff looks at this, there's three primary issues that we look at: reasonable return, essential character, and unique circumstances. Essential character and unique circumstances have been met. Given this historic nature of this area and given, you know, other hardship variances for carriage houses in this area, staff doesn't really see that this is out of character or there is kind of a unique circumstance here giving carriage houses. However, you know, courts look at, is a reasonable use being denied without this variance? And, you know, this property is being used as a single-family home, and so there is a reasonable use there, and so technically, staff can't recommend an approval. Any questions by the board?
Thank you, Scott. Judith?
Scott, if this carriage house were six feet shorter, they wouldn't need a hardship variance, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Any other questions for Scott?
Scott, so this will be a single-family where they live upstairs or the whole? Is there going to be, is it going to be a two-story?
To my, it's, you know, the upper level will be used for office space. As far as I understand, it's not living space.
Okay. If they decide to make it living space, will they have to come in front of us again for...
To make it a dwelling unit, it would have to have a special use, I'm sorry, a special exception for a duplex. So, yeah, they would have to come before us if they tried to make it a duplex.
Okay, thank you.
And when I speak duplex, it's basically two units. It's not necessarily attached, per se.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Thank you very much. Is our petitioner here? Will, if you wanted to come up to the podium and give us your name, address, and present your case to us, please?
Good afternoon. I'm Will Brook. I live at 820 Bridge Avenue. And, yeah, what we're trying to do with the carriage house is, you know, stay within kind of the norms of the neighborhood. We submitted some pictures, and I have a bunch more of other carriage houses around the neighborhood, and they're all kind of of the same design where, you know, a garage, carport sort of structure on the bottom and then a second floor or a half-floor. Additionally, where we're putting the carriage house, as far as we've been told, was at one point another house on that separate lot where the existing driveway was an alley down to between Oneida and Bridge. So if you go there, if you saw it, you can see the foundation still from the now-gone house. So we figured that was the best place for it for a lot of different reasons. But, you know, when I filled out the variance or the paperwork, I mean, there technically is, you know, hardship, but what we're trying to do is make it look nice and kind of like what's going on in the rest of the properties around us. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Will? Yes, Judith?
Recognizing, like Scott said, that the criteria set by the Iowa Supreme Court is six feet shorter, based on what you wanted to use this for, would it be a problem to make the building six feet shorter and still be able to have a carriage house?
Possibly. I'm not a, you know, a carriage house expert by any means. I mean, I, you could probably build it straighter and have it boxier, and, you know, then the roof wouldn't be as tall at the point. I don't know. And like I said, as I look around, there's more kind of angled roofs on the things that we're looking at. And I guess to kind of address the question when Scott was up here was, no, we have no intention of anybody living in the structure. It's just kind of a office space or studio for my wife.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anybody here in the audience today who wanted to speak in favor of Will's request? If you'd please come up to the podium, give us your name, address, and your comments.
I was also told I can hand you each sheet that has...
My name is Lamar Bucklew. I live at 1206 East River Drive here in Davenport. And basically, I wanted to come and support my neighbor, Will Brook, in his request. And I do this more out of the concept of our, of the historic Bridge District and the homes in the neighborhood in that era. So if a house was typically born, you know, built in the late 1870s like this one was and like Fulton's Landing and like some of these other properties here that I have pictured, typically, the carriage houses would be much larger than the 21-foot that's being requested and certainly larger than the 15-foot restriction that's placed on current zoning. So I can appreciate that, but in these pictures that I took today of some neighboring properties in the immediate vicinity, all are in well in excess of the 15-foot requirement at this stage. And so basically, I wanted to support him in that it's a structure that looks more closely resembling what an original carriage house would of this period. So in trying to keep with the historic Bridge Avenue District period look, if you will, we'd like to try to keep that as close as possible. And not a 15-foot garage, yes, you could park a car in it, but it's not going to look like something that was built in the 1870s. So basically, I just wanted to show up and offer my support to my neighbor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That will do. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Is there anybody else here who wanted to speak in favor of this request?
I have some photographs as well. It might be enough that you've already seen, but if you'd like to...
Sure. And then when you finish that, if you'd give us your name, address, and your comments.
Please disregard some of the conditions in these places because we are 100 acres Hi, I'm Mike Miller, 902 Bridge. Just one up from the subject property. I brought these photographs in to kind of give you an example of what the carriage houses in the area are, what they look like, and what the unusual style of the time. This is not what we see today built from the 50s, 60s, 70s. You had houses at that time 800 square feet. These places are quite large, and they require the kind of a style or grace of the time that matches. In order to keep the forward movement we have going on in the bridge area, to change it to something that's short and squat, pretty much takes us in the wrong direction, moves us backwards, not forwards. If you noticed where the property is and how it sits, the carriage house won't be seen from coming up Bridge, which is the only way, or down Oneida. It's in the center of his property, and it just, the only people that are going to see it is my house. That's about the only people, and I have no objection to it. It's just fine. I think the standards that have been set by the, if you say, the Supreme Court of Iowa are based on a whole different aspect. It's not for homes that are like this. In a development where you have 15, 20 houses that are 800 to 1,000 square feet, and you put up a 4,000-square-foot carriage house, it's out of place. But if you did that here, you're doing the exact opposite. You're putting up something that isn't right for the area. So to redraw this and make it different, it will distract from the area, not enhance it. That's basically what I'm looking at, is keeping the area. I don't know if you remember, but in the 60s, this area was deserted. It was empty and bums, my house particularly, there were bums living in it. They just took it over and then pretty much wrecked it. One family moved back in, one after another, used their own money at their own expense and their own risk to make this area nice again. And everybody, all the neighbors, I can tell you, there isn't anybody that doesn't want this to go forward. They all think it's a great idea, and we want to continue the forward movement we made.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wanted to speak in favor? Again, if you give us your name, address, and your comments.
Hi, I'm Ryan Carstensen. I'm a contractor that's hopefully going to be erecting the structure for Mr. Brook. The only thing I wanted to add was, and Judith, this is more directed towards you, you were asking about the height. If you reduce the height of the second level, it would be a non, you wouldn't be able to use it as a workspace. You wouldn't have the proper ceiling height. Right now, it's already a standard eight-foot garage stall with a standard eight-foot upper, so not trying to exceed with cathedral ceilings or anything of that nature. But I will say, in reference to the street, the structure is going to sit actually about five to six feet below the street because the hill is on, it's on a decline. So, you know, aesthetically, it's not going to seem as tall, per se, as, you know, if it was sitting right on the street. And plus with the bushes and the trees and whatnot in front. So that's just all I wanted to add.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wanted to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing no one, yeah, we will. Yep. I was just going to give our petitioner another opportunity to make any additional comments, Will. Will, do you have any other comments that you'd like to add before we move forward? All right. We will ask for a motion, and then we will have discussion. If somebody would give us a motion on this? They are.
I move to approve.
And a second, please.
A second.
All right. So discussion on this? Judith?
A question for Scott regarding natural historic districts. Is there anything in the regulations that would allow for modifications to be consistent with the characteristics of a historic district?
Our code currently doesn't allow for that right now. We are undergoing a zoning ordinance modification, and that's one of the things that's potentially under consideration.
Okay. And then perhaps another question for the architect. Yes, you...
Yeah, you're welcome, please, if you'd come up to the podium.
Just looking at the, you said it was on a downhill slope.
Yeah.
So that would lower the height of the building from the road?
Yeah, aesthetically, you're still going to have the same-sized structure, but from the street, it's going to seem five to possibly seven feet lower, you know, than what their house even is. If you look, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the property. I mean, it's all a complete downhill from Bridge down to Oneida. So it, I would say, yeah, probably six feet, depending on the grade of the land. It could be even a little lower than that if they decide to shove it even a little further back to the property, possibly. And from an aesthetic standpoint, I know you don't have the plans or whatnot, but we did look at historic carriage houses and whatnot, and, you know, they're looking at, you know, doing a play on aesthetics of kind of a Victorian or more of a convent, contemporary Victorian colors and styles. Obviously, it's not going to be a Victorian carriage house, but their houses are Victorian, so they wanted to match their property as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, Judith. Anything else? Yeah, Carrie, please.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the neighbors that came down. If you weren't here, I was going to reference Mr. Bucklew's email that was forwarded to us. It just makes sense to do this, and this is a really good example of why we should have the zoning board of adjustment. So I'll be voting in favor of this, but thank you for participating and showing us that this actually makes sense.
Any other discussion before we move to a vote? I'll just add, it's a delight to have neighbors come in support of each other. We don't often see that, and it's wonderful, and what you have done to that neighborhood over the course of time is just wonderful. It was sad to see those houses going to wreck and ruin, and it's a beautiful thing. Thank you. We'll move to a vote. Scott, if you would go ahead and call a vote?
Reistruffer.
Yes.
Woodard.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Strahan.
Yes.
And Hart.
Yes. Your petition is granted. Thank you very much. We will move on, if I can get rid of all my picture packets, to our next item on the agenda, which is John Trimble, you are here. If you'll, Scott will go, and then we'll take care of you. This is request HV-17-15 of John Trimble at 3400 Telegraph Road for a hardship variance to construct a 17.8-foot-tall, 30-foot-by-48-foot totaling 1,440 square feet, a detached garage, which would exceed the allowed area and height for a detached garage at this property. The lot is approximately 7.4 acres and has 1,568 square feet of living area. The property is zoned R4 moderate-density dwelling. Section 17.42.080 limits detached garage to 50% of the dwelling's living area, in this case, 784 square feet, and to 15 feet in height in the R4 district. Scott, if you would, please.
Scott Copes, Community Planning. So again, we have an accessory structure. This one exceeds both the area and the height. The height is only two and a half feet taller than what's allowed, and the area is nearly double what's allowed by code. This property is greater than 20,000 square feet, so it can have two garages, provided one is attached, which the petitioner does have, an attached garage right here. The proposed detached garage would be kind of the end of the driveway, and the smaller shed or garage in the rear would be demolished for the petitioner. So we have sent notices out, and we did receive one email in support, and that was emailed or forwarded on to you. This property, as you mentioned in the technical review, that it's like seven acres or more. If this property had been zoned R1, the height restriction would have been 20 feet, so it would have met that requirement. But it is zoned R4, even though it is a large lot and it's amidst a bunch of other properties or a large lot. This whole area is zoned R4 rather than A1, which further down on Telegraph, you have A1 properties. But so, as this property does not, you know, it's being reasonably used as a single-family house right now. It has a garage right now, so there's, you know, only convenience is the only reason to exceed the size in area and in height for the subject property. It's not an historic home. It's not an historic area. However, the lot size is significantly greater than most R4 lots. Technically, staff can't recommend approval because it does not meet number one, reasonable return.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody have questions for Scott? Yes, Chris.
So again, we're looking at rezoning and changing some things in the near future, so what, how does that perhaps relate to this situation?
When you say rezoning, you mean our change of our zoning ordinance? Our zoning ordinance is going to be similar as far as accessory height, that the larger lots will allow for a 20-foot-tall garage, and the smaller lots will allow a 15-foot garage. So R4 is typically a smaller-sized lot, and that's why the zoning requires a 15-foot height for this property. It just so happens to be that this property or this R4 zoning is located in an area that's a lot of large lots, so it doesn't necessarily meet the traditional look and feel of an R4 area.
Scott, I don't know if we have an overview that's large enough to show this, but is there any way that you could tell us how far we are from the line where the zoning...
It's at least a half-mile, if not more. I don't think I have. I think your packets have the map, but it doesn't, I don't think it has zoning.
I don't think it marks the zoning. That's what I was trying to kind of get a sense of.
Correct. It doesn't mark the zoning. But when I was doing the staff report, it's at least a half-mile before you come into anything that's R1 or agricultural.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Scott? Thank you very much. Mr. Trimble, if you would like to please come up and give us your name, address, and present your information?
John Trimble, 3400 Telegraph Road. I wish I had more neighbors here, but I don't, I guess, so. No, the main reason we're trying to get this done is we have a motorhome that just, it won't fit in our regular garage because of the height and length, actually. And we had one, a motorhome destroyed a couple of years ago because of weather, so we're trying not to prevent, or we're trying to prevent that from happening again. The other thing is, it's a huge lot, like Scott was saying. I bought a bigger tractor to try to maintain this property, to make it look presentable for people driving by. The people that had it before us kind of let it go downhill, and we're trying to get it back to the glory days, I should say. And actually, the people, if you go past our house on Telegraph, pretty much every house along there has some sort of a detached building, which I know that's neither here nor there at this point, but. And I also have a car that I try to store inside in the wintertime as well. But, so, yeah, that's the main thing that we're trying to do. As far as height goes, if you go into our driveway and then you take it right up into the, to like the garage that's there now, there's probably an eight-foot difference. So the shed will actually be lower. If you drive by, it'll actually be lower than the house roofline at that point, but so, yeah, that's what we're kind of trying to do. I guess my wife's here to support me, if that counts.
She's welcome to speak, too. And you got, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Further?
That's pretty much it.
Judith?
Is this the absolute smallest size and area that you could use and still have your equipment and your car and your RV?
The motorhome's about 36 feet. So I, and I was trying to keep it, you know, 30 foot's kind of a standard garage width or 24 to 30, I guess. So when you look from the street, it will look just like a regular garage. It will, it will be deeper, yes, than probably a standard garage. And obviously, the lot supports it. I'm not, I'm not trying to shove a 1,500-square-foot garage into a half-acre lot. You know what I mean? I mean, and nobody will see it. I could maybe, maybe shorten it a hair, but width-wise, I don't think I could, but, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I do have one, actually. When you were talking about the garage, the second garage being lower, I had been by, and I don't remember, are you saying the property drops off a little bit to the back so that brings it down?
No, actually, the house is built up. You don't see it from this picture, but there's quite a runoff from the front of the house and the west side of the house, it kind of rolls.
Okay, so the land in the back is a bit lower?
Yes. Where the shed's going to be, yes.
All right. I hadn't noticed that.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, we'll move to audience. Is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of this? Okay. Anybody that wants to speak in opposition?
She didn't.
Oh, you?
She better not.
You're welcome, too. All right. Then nobody seems to be here to oppose. If you have any other comments, this is your shot.
I don't at this point, but the color of the, you know, we're trying to keep the color, not that that matters, but we're trying to keep the colors of the shed to kind of match the house, so it'll kind of blend in, you know. You know, the trees are on the one side, the house is on the other side. As you drive by, you're probably not even going to notice the shed, to be honest with you. I mean, you'll see it for two seconds, and it'll fit in compared to the rest of the properties that have pole bilin, I mean, everyone's pretty much got a pole bilin, and they all try to match their houses, so it'll look nice. I mean, it'll be appropriate.
All right. John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would, if there's no other comments, we would take a motion, and then if there's any discussion, we can follow that up.
I make a motion that we approve the request HV-17-15.
A second?
A second?
Any discussion? I guess I would like to comment that generally speaking, we do not approve the size of a building for storage of RVs. In many cases, we've turned those down because that's inappropriate at a residential setting. This is so very, very close to similar properties to the west that I feel that it's not inconsistent here. My concern would be, I don't think that if we move any further east that it is, so I mean, you're just right on the cusp there, and I think that we can do it on the basis that it's consistent with the neighborhood to the west, so. Anybody else have anything to say? Judith?
I also, in support of what you're saying, Kathy. Looking at the aerial photo, everything is pretty much forested around it, so it's out of sight from the neighbors on that side of the street. And then the letter in favor was from across the street, and even looking at the aerial photo there, there's lots of trees across the street as well along the road, including, well, not so much with the one who approved it. There's not so many trees with the one who approved it on the other side of the road. who approved it on the other side of the road. Or support, not approved it, but supported, excuse me. I just wanted to...
Anybody else, any discussion? We'll call the vote then, please, Scott?
Lee.
Yes.
Strahal.
Yes.
Roy Struffer.
Yes.
Woodard.
Yes.
And Hart.
Yes. Mr. Trimble, you have your storage, your big garage. Thank you so much for your time. We have no other business on the agenda. We'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we need to say anything about the original agenda project that went away? There, there were three original projects, and one of them was withdrawn.
No, that, there wasn't, we had a new agenda that was presented to us for today. Let me see if I have that. I can certainly make a mention of it.
It's withdrawn, right?
It's, it was completely withdrawn. I mean, it's not on our agenda, so, I, yeah. Oh, okay, yes, there was an updated agenda. All right. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, Carrie. Scott?
I, I would say that since it was put in the paper, you could probably be better off to, to make a motion stating that the item's been removed due to the email requesting it be withdrawn.
Well, we'll put that on the record then, right now. We did originally have on the agenda request HV one seven dash one four of Jared Neiman for the property at twenty-one oh three, or, excuse me, twenty-three oh one Elm Street to reduce the lot size from fifty-eight hundred square feet to forty-eight hundred square feet. The property was zoned R four, moderate-density dwelling district, section one seven point four two point one zero, requires property zoned R four, moderate-density dwelling district to be six thousand square feet in lot area. We received... Just a moment, because I wasn't planning to do this. We received an email from Mr. Neiman, December eleventh, eleven fifty a.m., which reads, "Mr. Copes, I am officially withdrawing my request for a variance on lot size. Mr. Rock and I have an arrangement to address the issue. Thank you for your assistance, Jerry Neiman." So, he has withdrawn that officially, and that should cover all our business. Anything else?
I just wanted to make a suggestion again, that I was talking before the meeting started, that seems like on the days that we have meetings, that Jessica needs to call all of us to try to find out if we're gonna be able to make it or whatever. I, I just think it'd be easier to make the suggestion that you would notify us, ask for notification the day before the meeting, and that might make it a lot easier for Jessica to know, are we gonna have a quorum? Who's gonna make it? Who can't make it? That type of thing. So, just, it's just a suggestion, but it seems to me that it would make more sense and be easier than trying to find out on the last day or eleventh hour.
Thank, thank you for adding that, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you for that. We are following protocol with our other boards, which is done the day of, but we can certainly change it to the day before.
All right. Anything else? We would take that motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A second? Come on.
Okay.
All of, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Oh, and since we won't be here, I don't think, before the holidays, a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and whatever manner you'd celebrate. Thank you all.